I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. People at home are wondering why we're pledging no allegiance to any corner. We are waiting for finance committee to come down at 6:30. We have not yet seen the budget. It's our understanding that they're coming, but we don't have revenue figures. Let me see if I can skip ahead to do some other things. I'm gonna take open time for the public now, and I understand we have someone here who would like to address us about the Memorial Day Parade Committee. You guys should come forward.
Come on.
Join us up at the front of the room.
Thank you. My name is Richard Leclair. I'm commander of the post 168 Southampton, Maryville, Louisiana. I have an open letter I'd like to present to the select board. May I please?
You may. Finance, we moved, jumped a little bit ahead to take care of some business that we can move along quickly. If I may summarize this letter, or would you like to?
Well, the letter states that the Legion is made up of only, basically, I have two people to do the parade, myself and one of us. Ninety percent of our people are World War II vets, in their 80s and 90s, and they cannot do this. We've asked for help before, and we have none. So we are, we are going to do the parade this year, but unfortunately, this is the last year where I am to do this. I wanted to give you at least a year notice, so that maybe you can come up with something to help continue. I'm debating if I'm gonna leave town or not, because I figured I'm gonna be lynched for doing this.
No, I think what we do is owe you a round of applause for your years.
I just didn't want to do this by the half there, because there's nobody else to do it, and I don't want to lose the parade, so I figured maybe you can come up with some ideas. We're totally wore out. We're still gonna continue to put the flags up around town, and we're still gonna take care of the cemetery flags. And the Legion is still gonna continue, but we're not able to do the parade. So, that's it.
Anybody?
Well, Richard, I think your association has carried it down on this event for many years. It's been a privilege to work with you on many of these events, and sad to see it go, but time has passed.
Time has passed. It's been my honor to serve this town, but I'm sorry to say this, age has caught up with the majority of us, and the young people just don't want to get involved. And I can't blame them.
You've served long and well, so that's not an issue. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would like to move to create a committee to establish a new parade, exist it, you know, keep it going, and wondering if I may be able to do that.
You may what? Establish a committee?
Establish a committee to, a parade committee, in Southampton.
All right. Do we want to make a parade committee, a Memorial Day Parade Committee?
Richard, do you have any suggestions?
If you can make up a committee, we'll try to help as much as possible, but we need younger people.
We got somebody behind you that would like to speak.
Robert Floyd, 50 E Street. I have ten years of incredible documentation of each parade from the 10 of the last 14. That'd be amazing template for any committee to, to look at and see what's been happening.
Robert, what about, Robert, what about, we're forming a committee, but we're on TV tonight, so asking for volunteers in our audience here and our audience at home, and if Robert could produce a few pictures that we could hang out here and put a sign-up sheet to see if we could elicit some membership from the public at large. This really needs to become a community event, as opposed to a one or two-person event.
I'd like to make a motion.
There you go, ma'am.
I'd like to move that Jackie Sears chairs, this is my parting shot, chairs the new Memorial Day Parade.
Me.
Committee, parade committee, and we're hereby asking all the young folks in town if they would like to join with Jackie and find a way to keep this lovely tradition moving forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Blinding speed for us. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will give you as much help as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, one and all.
Thank you, sir, for your years of service to the country and to the town.
Thank you.
Now, welcome back to mundane finance committee issues.
I wish I could agree with you.
I thought it started out that way, and see where we go from. What do we got?
Well, we don't have a fully reconciled yet, because we don't have all the revenue numbers in. But with some quick...
What revenue numbers are we missing?
We want to verify the new growth, and we want to verify some of the other small revenues before we give you anything. But the real, the real issue is the increases in the requests from the departments. Like I said, none of the requests are things that we, as a finance committee, we really don't need that. It's, it's all good things that they're requesting, but obviously, we have a limited amount of money. HRHS, as I know, is roughly $657,000 higher on a request for this year over the last year, which is 11.8%.
11.8% increase?
$657,000.
What department is that?
High school.
High school. The police are roughly $240,000 on the numbers. Fire, $140,000. Highway Department's up, I didn't pencil the number in. Norris, Cynthia, I'll meet you back there, just asked, they'll tell you an email, they have an extra roughly $80,000 to their increase already. So I'm sure that like a million and one increases over the last year. That's what we're showing them, so...
What does revenue track with that?
Lower?
Yeah. Yes, we're...
Yeah. And one of the issues is, we have good cash flow for free cash, $626,000, but we reallocated, or we allocated $400,000 of it already, and that's the issue. So the free cash goes from here down to here. Remember, we borrowed at the special account meeting, $110,000.
Are we putting anything back?
Well, we want to put $100,000 on each account, but we gotta pay back the stabilization fund from last time. That's $112,000. And we had that discussion when we approved it, saying, are we gonna be able to do it? So to me, that's, that's the first increase of stabilization, pay back what we borrowed. We have a whole litany of other items. So it's, you know, it's gonna be a tough reconciliation. So we don't want to say to the department, you should cut this, or you need to look at cutting this until we have all the revenue numbers, because if we're off by $100,000 or $150,000 now, and we find that money, it's gonna mean a lot to some department.
Do you think the revenue numbers are gonna come close to a $1.1 million dollar increase?
No.
Then shouldn't we put the departments on notice that they, they better start looking at it?
That's why we're here. We're putting on notice in the sense that we're gonna have to go back to the schools and the highway and the police and the fire. I mean, there's some good ideas coming out of, say, the fire department on some new services for the town, but they're expensive. So are we able to balance that with, highway has a lot of needs, police have a lot of needs, all good things, but, you know, I wish there was something on there we could look at and say, you know, it's ridiculous, we don't want it, but there's none of that. It's all stuff that they want to improve their departments in their areas, and that helps the town in general.
Well, we're looking at a $1.1 million increase. What's the guesstimate as to what the revenue increase might be?
The revenue increase over what?
What, you know, you're looking at new growth and to finance the $1.1?
Yeah, that's the number we're going to have. I mean, if we gave you a rough, it comes close, and we're at, I don't know, $13.7 or so, million dollars, but don't hold me to that one.
No, I don't try not, but...
But expenses are $13.8 right there. That's, that's before we factor in the free cash. So, you know, can we conceivably come close? Yeah. But again, I don't want to say that and have all the departments feel good about it, and we have to go back and make changes. So we met last night as a group, we're meeting again, and Derek and I are meeting, just two of us, at different times, since there's only two of us, it's not really a committee meeting, so we go over the numbers. And fortunately, he's not here, he's not feeling well, but fortunately for us, unfortunately for him, he got laid off, and he's been putting tremendous amount of time in during the day. So without that, we would be kinda stuck.
John, could you go over those numbers again? We started out with $626 something free cash?
$626, $867.
$867 free cash. Then you say we allocated $400,000?
Well, yeah, roughly $112,000 for the special town meeting, the transfer back. Allowance to Hampshire Regional District, shortage operating account for fiscal 13 budget was $92,000.
Right, you move to that.
The study for the OPEB, what's that?
OPEB. Actually, it was study for OPEB, which is a company that others, we should have been doing it all along, and we're not.
How much was that?
It's about $10,000.
Okay.
Donna's getting estimates for that.
Fire department expenses is another 13. Public safety complex studies, you know, $50,000. Design consultant for Norris for $24,000. And we have two transfers to operating stabilization at 50, and one to capital at 50. So that brings it down to $219.
Okay. So down to $219.
About $400,000.
And then we wanted to do 100, and 100 to stabilization and capital?
Well, we'd be an extra 50 each. We built in 50, but we kind of embarrassed ourselves, you know, $100,000 coming into the...
Just to explain to the audience, the stabilization accounts, we have two. One is an operating stabilization, and one is a capital stabilization, so, and that's our rainy day fund.
That we use.
That we, that rains a lot out of.
That we use elsewhere. And you have to go to town meeting, get a two-thirds vote to take money out of either of those, so...
And to put it back in.
And to put it back in. So we just can't take it in and out.
But it's, it's our stopgap, last ditch emergency.
Rainy day fund.
Rainy day fund.
Yeah.
And it rains.
It rains a lot.
And it rains a lot.
So, I'm open, but I mean, individual departments have questions, but we sat down with all the departments, and again, there's, there's departments, you know, that the library needed some additional funds, and they were very valid, but it's been all, I think, was $950,000. But that's important to get good funding, you know. So all the small departments, I would hate to go back and say, everybody needs to cut a percentage, because it hurts the small department so much. I mean, we set up a budget for the Almanor, it was last year, it's the second year, $6,000. I mean, you can't really cut that. True or 10,000. You know, so we've gotta do it in a more intelligent way, I think, than just slicing across. Gotta work with the different departments and try to find a way to...
Just to be clear, we need to sign the warrant by May 7th.
Now, but do we need to have a number, or just the fact that we're presenting the budget?
I think we have to have a number.
Do we need a number?
We need a number. Then, by the time we sign the warrant, it has to be specific. The warrant is to notify the residents of what's coming.
Warn the residents.
Warn, warn the residents of what's coming. And it has to be itemized as it's going to appear on the morning. We can amend it from the floor, but it, when we sign the warrant, it's gotta be, that's the way it's gonna be presented.
John, what about revenue coming in from the state? I was just reading that there's some sort of a little better allocation.
Well, Chapter 70 money was a little...
Chapter 70, what about the, wasn't there Chapter 40's money in there?
Our state aid is also from last year.
So there wasn't any increase?
Yeah, we were at minimums for the Chapter 70, not really...
Wasn't there a recent $15 million infusion into the unrestricted for general government? Which is not a lot of money overall for the Commonwealth.
That was the one, because I believe our Chapter 70 were at minimum, it didn't add too much. Cynthia, uh... Nope, guess not. She, her and I emailed today, and she said it looks like from the 7th point of view, we're getting minimal increases over a lot.
Now, they just signed that, didn't they?
Right. The Senate hasn't passed it.
Yeah, that the House...
So that's...
So the chair, she needs to, that Derek and I were looking at to put the numbers in here, with what Derek published, I updated that.
Senate's supposed to deal with their portion, and probably go back to a compromised crude, tumultuous solution. John, if I may, when do you think you're gonna have numbers where department heads can look at their budget realistically going into the annual town meeting and be able to not be shocked and awe on the day of the, on the town meeting? We're gonna need some time to digest this and look at solutions.
Well, Derek and I will work on it again tomorrow. I'll get the town hall tomorrow, he's gonna come meet me in the morning, we're gonna go over some new numbers here. And he, at our meeting tonight, we gave him some new numbers to plug in. Vicky's coming up to me, goes after this meeting, and fill in some gaps that we have, so, you know, in the next couple of days.
John, Cynthia's on the hallway.
Cynthia Andrews. By hand, we gotta stress the fact that we've gotta sign this next Tuesday night, which I'm gonna say...
Yeah, we'll have numbers for you by the end.
Well, I was gonna make mention to the board that we've gotta have enough numbers here to sign the budget.
Well, you have a new member.
Question comes, should you sign the budget?
Plus...
Probably not, as Peter was saying.
Should Jackie sign the budget?
It's 2-3 right now.
I'm just gonna, for our purp, well, there will be an unknown quantity next week.
Well, all you have to do is get committed, so three of you, yeah?
Well, no, if, you can't, an employee can't sign the warrant, because you have an interest in it, and you sometimes have an interest that you probably shouldn't, Ed shouldn't...
And what happens to somebody that works for the school?
At the class, I'll have to make a phone call to town council.
Probably should make that phone call, huh?
I suppose I should. I'll call town coun...
I'm wearing torn. Make a note.
Call me in the morning. We'll see.
So when is, when I get the elections, is it Monday?
Monday. So Tuesday night, we constitute a new board, so we need...
Well, if we have to come in soon, we can call emergency meeting and send the warrant.
That might be the better thing to do right now.
Well, to sign the warrant now?
No, to get your numbers as quickly as you can.
And sign it.
When we need 48 hours for a meeting, post a meeting before...
Well, if it's, well, would it be an emergency, which is what, 24?
I don't know what you'd call this.
No, the standard media is 24.
Yeah, at this age, you're gonna constitute an emergency.
The other thing is, what about department heads having a say? What happened to that?
Yeah, that cuts that all out. Honestly, we're gonna have to go with the assumption it's Tuesday night in order to do it, and we'll have to find out from town council, there's gotta be a way. Yes?
Mike, I got, I guess, two questions. One would be, why is it that we're finding ourselves in the $11 budget process, and, you know, we're having this discussion about, you know, not even giving department heads the opportunity to come and talk to the board. Historically, we've had some issues with that in the past. For years, departments always had the opportunity to come in and discuss their budget, directed with the select board a few years ago under the new town administrator. We had, that somehow got eliminated, and Bo Dad and I came to the board about three years ago and talked to the board, and we resolved that, and went back to allow the department heads to come in and meet with the select board and discuss our budgets. And so, from what you're saying, now that's not even gonna be an option at this point. I've got, you know, things that I put in my budgets, like recruiting, we have discussed in the last number of years, including last year, for a new cruiser to make it a line item. I don't know if that's gonna be a line item or not. We've got articles in the draft form for the special town meeting. Historically, we take a cruiser out of capital expenses, so, you know, I need to put a, an article for cruiser for that on, on the drafts, you know, run down the drafts on the articles for special town meeting. I don't know what's going on. And so, I think it's very unfair that we find ourselves in this situation. How can we possibly represent what we need for departments when everything's being done in the 11th hour like this? And I need some managers now, tonight, to know what I need to put in articles to address some of the issues that probably, from the sounds, the things are gonna get cut out of my budget request.
Well, I think at this point in time, I'm, to answer your question, that's why I'm against having this be an emergency. We'll, if we have to do this next Tuesday night, we'll do it next Tuesday night, and the departments will have a chance at that point in time to argue their questions. I understand it doesn't give you opportunity to put a new article on, on the warrant.
Yeah, that becomes $11 and 59 minutes.
Well, actually, probably 12:01. But, I'll ask John, why, why are we doing this so late, John?
This was a process that was began by the interim town administrator to take over the task. We sat down with her and Vicky originally, and she wanted to handle that process, and she was gonna work with Vicky, and my understanding is, Vicky wasn't in the process.
That's to be corrected, I was not in the process. I was not in the process.
All right. There's been some disagreement over the process, I guess, this time, chief. And we've come to this place in time, and I don't agree with being in this place in time, but we're here and we've gotta deal with it. And I think the only way we can deal with it now is that Tuesday night, we will have a meeting again, and we'll see where we are. Why are, you know, we have tried to schedule this last week, to do this, and we couldn't do it last week. Why couldn't we do it last week?
Because Nancy Mace is not coming. This is the job that the town administrator needs to handle and have budget experience and do the process. We've got it bits and pieces, and we're trying to go, we're meeting with the treasurer, we're meeting with the, a congressman, we're meeting with all, it's not a function that we should, you know, it's something where the town administration should have budget experience and know the process. And when we sat down with her originally, she wanted to handle the process. He said, well, it's only us working on it, but she wanted to handle it, she wanted to collect it, she wanted to put the spreadsheets together, and just, so John, where are we now, John?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm gonna come back to that. If there was a problem with the town administrator, everybody knows where I am. No one told me there was a problem with the town administration.
We decided to take it over and do it ourselves.
You know, I'm, I'm...
And we communicated, got some numbers from her and all that, but it wasn't...
I never was aware that there was a problem with the administrator, or what we were doing. This, this process in my nine, eight years on the board has swung back and forth over the years. At times, the finance committee has handled the whole budget, at times, the administrator handled the budget, and at times, we handled the budget.
Well, I remember when the finance went to Diana and discovered, there you go.
And I remember that, and that's fine, that's trying to figure out how you get an administrator to work. But this, whatever happened, happened. You are missing right now the revenue, is that what you're missing?
I think in the next day or two, we're gonna be able to have all the information. After we meet with Vicky and...
Can you have a finance meeting sometime between now and Tuesday with all your numbers? Maybe all not all keyed up exactly, that could be with the department heads, so they could at least see where the numbers are? Is that possible?
Yeah, we're gonna have a meeting on Monday, as it is.
Okay.
So on Monday, the department heads could be present at finance to at least see what the numbers are, and then we at least have 24 hours for our meeting to sort of put it all together.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta go out. Your budget to the town departments has to go out. Certainly by Friday, I would assume that would be the target, and why we can't do that.
But then their, their meeting can give us a sense of a give and take for...
Well, I think in, for instance, the chief's case, if, you know, he needs to put an article on there, then it gives us time on Monday to do that, or him on time on Monday to do that.
Do you wanna schedule a joint meeting of selectmen, finance on Monday?
Well, that, you can't do it on Monday, you got a town election.
They're meeting on Monday. Are you meeting on Monday?
Well, I think the best thing we can do is meet on Tuesday, because you're gonna have an election, and you're not gonna know who your fifth member is on Monday night.
But I think the meeting on Monday would be to facilitate the department heads with some input from the select board and the finance of what the budget is, and regardless of the outcome of the election, at least the department heads know where they stand, and what they could advocate, and if they have three things they wanna do, and then they can get two, the department head gets to choose which two. And that's what the meeting Monday night would be.
No, let me ask you if you're saying this. When they, when they have something ready, they could get it out to the department heads through Reggie. It doesn't have to be next Monday, it could be Thursday this week, to be frank. Whenever it's ready. So Dave, and all those department heads can have something to digest and say, if I'm gonna work with this, this is what I have to look for.
But let them know, let finance know on Monday, so then finance can then tell us where we're exactly after Tuesday. How's that? Does that work?
I don't know what you ended up suggesting.
Friday's closed, or the town hall, so...
Monday's closed?
Friday's closed. Friday's closed. I don't, department heads are working.
I work on Fridays.
She'll work on Fridays.
I work on Fridays.
I mean, we can get it out, I don't think there's a problem disseminating it on Friday, that's not the issue.
As long as it's Sunday, Saturday's should be there.
The question here becomes, I think, from David's point of view, is we meet Monday night to discuss it.
Right, so that, you know what the town, what the department heads want for their request, because now they know the numbers, and if Chief Silverhill wants to pick one thing or the other, he can pick what he wants, he can prioritize what his three or four things that he really wants.
As long as they have, they have something to know what's going on, so they can submit arguments.
That's what I mean, so Monday would be the last day to do that. As hard as it is. And we can take piecemeal, department by department, and kind of find out exactly where that department needs to go, or if we're asking to cut or throw, okay, and send it out individually. You don't have to send it out one by one, so I ask...
Well, I guess, and that would be helpful, is to get the bigger budgets, especially like the police and fire and highway, out tomorrow if you can. I just don't know what we can accomplish on Monday night.
I was just looking for feedback from the department heads, that's all.
Well, and I appreciate that, but I, I don't know whether, with a reconstituted board on Tuesday, it's fair to that person or whoever to come in and have it all done up before they get there, and have no input.
We can have a preliminary, and closer we can get it, if we need to amend it, we can amend it.
Let me ask this question, are we still doing a hearing right after that meeting on Tuesday?
We're still doing a hearing.
Department meeting, hearing.
Department, yeah, Tuesday, I would assume we would.
Well, it helps all, because that's, we can't do that tonight again.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, Tuesday night would be the hearing to hear from the departments. We could, you know, I promise you, you gotta sign the warrant on Tuesday night, which is, well, Robert?
Just a quickie, small thing, but really to make sure the new select board person is sworn in.
Yeah.
For your Tuesday meeting.
Yeah.
I sent a warrant, but...
No, that's true. You're right, you're right. Is it easy enough to overlook in the rush to get it done?
Yeah, I'll be around. I'm sure I leave well, too.
But, here comes the problem, it has to be done on Tuesday, so there can't be no modification of the numbers after Tuesday. Right? Tuesday's the absolute drop dead last day we can sign it.
Yeah. Sounds like the best idea is for the finance committee to get a good handle on each of the major departments, and their, the big, big funds, and where people are willing to prioritize.
Can you go ask Eileen if we can meet with an election, going town election going on? The first question here is, can we meet on a night with an election? Certain boards can't meet when there's an election, so, I got, we're gonna have Reggie find out if we can meet on a night with an election. If we can't, then Monday night is out anyway, and it becomes a moot point if it, if it...
This is another question. We don't know what the state aid's gonna be, because the state and the governor have the state and the governor have not signed those. And they traditionally go beyond June 30th. And if there's even more of an impact on that, we'll be coming back to adjust the budgets again. Whether they're up or down, there's going to be another time we're going to have to consider that. So, um, can't you work out some numbers with hopefully close proximities what those revenues are and say, this is what we got. This is the best way of going. We might have to adjust them up or down depending on what the state's budget is, or those are the revenue numbers you're waiting for. But we need to go on and assume that we're going to get those numbers or plug in your numbers. We have to deal with that later on.
We don't want to spend all the free cash because once that's gone.
Well, you know, we have to operate. And technically, we can't operate till I first without an approved budget.
We can do that. We can have that due a couple days. It's, it's Monday.
Here's an interesting question that just dawned on me. Would you go ask Eileen? Ann's term is up that night. If we had a meeting on Monday night at 6 o'clock, who's the right person to sit in the seat? Is Ann the right person?
The election's not over till-
Eight o'clock. So I, well, when's her, the question becomes, when is her term up? Is it that?
Eight.
I, I-
There's a new person.
Eight o'clock, I assume, but I don't want to make that assumption and be wrong.
Technically, she's not a new chair until it's this morning, because she's there. We had that incident where we had a carry before.
Before, yeah, when there was, when, when there was nobody to take the chair, we carried that person's turn until someone replaced it.
I'm not here Monday.
She's not here.
I'm in Worcester on Monday night.
But that makes it difficult for voting purposes on the budget.
So I could cancel my meeting in Worcester.
Because my thought is, we'll schedule a meeting for Monday night at 6:30. In case we need it, I'll, we'll post a meeting for 6:30 on Monday night, as long as we can handle the technicalities of it. Meet with departments that night, probably come back and meet on Tuesday night, but at least give you the opportunity of 24 hours to discuss your budgets. And that single, single item on that night would be budgets.
Only budgets.
Yes.
Dr. Smith, Library Trustees, he might think of us as a wing of departments, but I just, I just want to speak up because I feel it's my responsibility, because we are a small department. I know you've got to deal with the big guys, but we are such a small, significant percentage of the budget, and we provide a really incredibly important service. And our little bit of money gets, you know, it gets not carefully attended to. I know these guys are working very hard, but I just wondered, I wanted to know if the small budgets, the small departments are-
Small but important.
Right. Could I say something to that? So about that rug, right? You need that rug. Before I leave, I have to advocate for the rug. This is a rug.
We need a cleaner.
At the library is, has bacteria on it, and little toddlers-
No, that's all, that's taken care of.
That one's taken care of? What's the other dirty rug there?
Well, actually, we're not anymore about books and dirty rugs, but we're working on the dirty rugs.
I want that rug changed.
And just that.
Right.
All right. Does, does anybody have a problem with a Monday night meeting, 6:30's budget only, assuming, assuming we have the budget numbers out to everybody by then? Because Ann can vote if we-
I'll be here. I'll come, I'm fine. You want me to move, but I'll be here.
I don't know how I'll ever pay back, but yeah. Um, can you be here?
One of the issues we're going to have is, you know, we have four members voting budgets. So we're going to sit down with them and sit down with all the others, but everything is going to be super important. Everybody, Chief, he needs these. So is it really up to the finance committee to say it can happen? You know, it's, that's a difficult thing for the finance committee to do.
But if you can't do it, then we've got to do it.
Well, we can do it.
But that's our job. You tell us what's available, and then we have to make the choices. But we don't know what's available for choices.
And we can tell you that. That's recommending, that's where, we meet once a week. This, this is more an internal negotiation, if you will, with the departments and select board and town administrator has the process going along. So, you know, for us to tell the chief, you don't need an extra police officer. I mean, that's, that's ludicrous. I don't know, you know, I believe what he says because he presents a good case. Same with the fire chief. He needs, you know, EMTs, but we can cover it. It's a great plan. It's $80,000, we can afford it. So this group really needs to say, you know, chief, that $80,000 for the EMT service, it's a great idea, but we can't afford it. Or it's a great idea, we're taking it from somewhere else. It's, for the finance committee to say that to the folks, I don't think it's the right. So we'll give you the numbers, both sides. You just give us the deficit, if there's one. And you folks, you know, will have to make those decisions. So we'll give it to you ahead of time, along with the department heads. But we're not going to send, I don't think we should send anything out to the department head saying, you know, chief, I want you a $150,000, because that's not, I don't have the knowledge that he has on this. He needs to work with his bosses, which are you folks.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but we still have to present a town meeting a balanced budget. If we don't plan, we don't deal with a balanced budget. We've seen what has happened in the past. We have this problem that's persist and persists constantly.
I just don't want you to think we're going to come up with all the answers, because you folks are going to have to make some decisions.
Well, we're going to make the philosophical answers, but the problem was, do I, I think, yeah, I think you should have told them if there's a cut that needs to come, yes, I think the finance committee should have told them there's a cut coming. Especially when you're, you know, with you and the budget process. When we did it, we sat down and we told departments what they could have and what they can't have. Someone's got to do it, and now we're getting late to do that.
Yeah, I agree. It's a zero-based budget, though, and they, they built it up. So it's-
Well, then it's- It was based on need.
Exactly.
Based on need. It was a new approach. And when you ask for needs, you're going to see things going up because there's, every department has things they've put on hold for the last 10 years, if not 15 years. And we can't ever play catch-up. But you asked for something, and we addressed it, as departments. And I think you've got those numbers of what would be a good budget to address the critical things that are going on in this town and all departments. But you're saying, we can't afford it. Again, but that's not your fault. We don't, we don't have that money. And, but we got to present a balanced budget to the town.
So when we, I have to, when we asked to do a zero-based budget, the idea that this would be a new way to kind of look at budgets from the ground up, really what probably happened, and it's understandable, is that there was deferred maintenance, so to speak. So deferred wishes, and they built a budget based on what they would really like to see. So now it is up to all of us to bring it back to what our reality is. I mean, we asked for that, so we can't. That explains the $1.1 million over last year.
Maybe what we should do, and this is just me speaking, is when you, I guess when I assumed a zero-based budget, we were going to come back with a zero-based budget, not a zero-based budget plus what I, I would like. You know, and I, maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but maybe we should have a zero-based budget, and here's my wish list over here. Pick out of it, but-
Yeah, that's, that's not really what a zero-based budget is.
But I mean, this is, I don't know, this is crazy at this point.
The department heads are doing their jobs.
Oh, they, they're there to advocate. I don't, I don't disagree that the department heads are there to advocate.
And now they have to prioritize what's important to them. Right, right.
Can I just ask Cynthia, Cynthia, what's the budget increase to the regional? How much is it?
Actually, it's-
And she confirmed that the county school committee voted on keeping that rather than reducing it, so.
Yes, they voted to put forth the same number as the preliminary budget. Actually, the bottom line increase was 3.47%.
How much is that?
Our, it's 400,000. The problem we had with the regional budget this year, and both regional budgets, is that, that, so you have 400,000, but the increase in towns is like 600,000 because of the revenue. We've been using our free cash, $200,000 a year, plus we've been using more school choice than we thought we were going to get in. Free cash this year, I haven't certified, I think it's like 200,000.
What was it last year?
Last year it was, it was like around 400,000. So the school committee decided they would put 200,000 into the budget to help the assessment.
Just, which school are we talking about? Regional or not?
We're talking about the regionals.
Okay. You said both regionals budgets, and that kind of-
Well, Chesterfield-Goshen and Hampshire. I mean, you know, we had the same issue. It wasn't, you know, the costs. It was contractual obligations. There wasn't much else put in the budget. But then when we came to, to doing the revenues, the pots of money that we've been using to help, you know, defer some of the assessments to the towns didn't there anymore. So.
So your actual dollar increase is 400,000?
Right.
But because of revenue decreases, it falls on the town, six falls on the towns is 600,000?
Exactly.
And are there more students going to regional?
Uh, no.
So there's less?
It's about the same, yeah.
But our proportion has increased a little.
Right, your proportion has increased because you have, there's increased South Hampton students and other towns have decreased.
I think we're at 56%.
Now, now, you said school choice is down, revenue from school choice is down?
Revenue from school choice is down also.
How much is that down?
Um, in the, in the past, we've had, we've put like 650 in. This year, we got like, we've put 500,000 in, and then we're using another 70,000 in reserve that we, that we've had before.
I mean, what, what are the, you have two reserves, the school choice and your regular reserve fund?
Right.
What have happened there for now? Just curious.
In what?
In both reserve accounts.
Um, school choice is down around 200,000 now, too.
What about the other reserve fund? How much is in that?
Certified free cash was around $200,000 this year.
400 for the two accounts. Anybody planning on the East Hampton school opening and any reduction in?
Well, they're in, I mean, they're in nice part of the problem in school, in building a budget based on school choice, is yes, East Hampton's open. We have been, because South Hampton takes school choice and because Chesterfield takes school choice, in the past, probably 80% of our school choice, when I first got there in 2003, 80% of the kids came from East Hampton. Now it's more maybe 60, 40, 40% coming from, from South Hampton. It's Westfield and Holyoke and, you know, the towns that you get school choice kids from. And Chesterfield-Goshen, we're getting kids from Worthington and Covington and up that way, so.
How many kid, how many, is there any way to break out how many kids come out of East Hampton for, to school choice into us?
I'd say probably, there's about 110 kids coming in school choice, and probably about 60% of those are, are East Hampton. I do have the breakdown. I don't have a way to-
Yeah, that's, so roughly 60 students are, could be-
5,000 each, right?
Yes. It's costing us 650,000 between school choice and, and charter to send kids out.
So we're, we're in net loss.
Yes, absolutely. At one time, it used to kind of balance.
But if it, of those 60 East Hampton students, 50 of them go back to East Hampton, we-
Right. Now, now, part of it is, though, and I think if you look at trending in school choices, if we get a kid, kid comes into South Hampton, they tend to stay all the way through high school. They start making friends. And for them to go back to a school where they don't have friends, they, they don't have ties, is hard. So I think the East Hampton opening of school, I don't think there's going to be a great influx of kids going back to East Hampton. But as you start looking at seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, you're going to start seeing maybe fewer and fewer kids coming from South Hampton or from East Hampton, and you'll, you'll start losing.
Chief wanted to speak. Is anybody, did you have something to follow?
Have you looked at projections over the, over the next, you know, several years, five, 10 years, where these trends are sort of heading for the small towns, the, the regional?
About what?
Have you looked for the trends, like, you know, enrollment in the elementary schools? How are-
Yeah, right now, we're kind of on a downward spiral. We're starting to see a little increase in some of the elementary schools, but across the state, enrollments are-
Down.
On the decline.
And how do you see that affecting the towns for the regional? How do we can defray some of that expected increases?
I don't, in the near future, I don't think it'll have an effect in the, in the far reaches. Well, Gateway, Gateway's been losing a lot more kids than we have. And it really hasn't, you know, their, it hasn't decreased their budget, if that's what you're asking. If you got to the point here, now, most of the classes at the elementary school are up over 20 kids. There's no, I think there's one grade at the elementary school that you could potentially cut a teacher. But when you look at the elementary school, even if you just took the resident kids and you tried to cut a teacher, it will be increasing class sizes. So the school choice kids we take in at the elementary school just kind of, they marginally add to make the classes higher. But you, there's, there's no way in the near future that you could probably do some major cuts unless you wanted to trade off and have much higher class sizes.
Because if it sits on this year, what's it going to be next?
All right, you said?
Thank you, Cynthia. Appreciate it.
Chief, you had a question or a comment?
There was a comment. And it was based on about 10 minutes ago, and the discussion ensued about the zero-based budget and how apparently there seems to be a belief that it caused departments to overstate their budgets. I just wanted to go on record by stating the zero-based budget, as we hear of today, is nothing new to me. I've always based the police department on a zero base. I've always built and constructed the police budget each year on real costs that it, the cost from the police department. And I'm not sure where John came up with, the finance committee covered the $240,000 increase. I suspected because of the new Excel format of this, that it totaled every single category together, where in the past, there's been breakdown in different areas of the police budget. But if you were to look back, you'd see that I've always asked for extra money for training, specialized training, in a number of areas that just simply made, never made it into the approved budget the previous year. So I don't feel that the police budget has been, you know, exaggerated or excelled in any way other than the same amount that has occurred every year in my projections. I try to do an accurate budget based upon real world costs, the last couple of years, the current year that we're in. You know, one of the areas that I did increase this year, more sold in last year, was training. The state has cut out even further financing of police training. We have to assume it all at the same time. They mandated 40 hours of in-service training every year without funding. Another unmandated, unfunded mandate. So, you know, in the world that we're in, I have a responsibility to get our officers better trained. So, you know, I just wanted to make it clear that zero-based budget is a new term here, but it's not a new philosophy in building the police budget.
No, it's, it's, last three or four of them have been based on, we've sent out the, the select board, I believe, has sent out the, the memo that it was to be starting with zero and, as, you know.
Years past, we were told to deal with a level funding.
Take from last year's, this is the first term, time was, was presented, was a zero-based budget. It itemized all your costs versus lumping them together. And, you know, I know
Dave Silverhill, how he presents his budget, and he does, always done a zero-based budget. I think many department heads have done a zero-based budget. But this year here, the way it was presented, it was like, maybe there's a chance to do catch-up and things like repairs that were put off for four and five years that can't be fixed anymore. We can address them. But, well, there's a lot of false normers here that, and we're all realistic. There's X amount of money, and that's what we can spend, and we're going to have to cut, whether we like it or not. I think that nobody's here has talked about an override or anything like that, and that would be further down the road. But the point is, we have to approach this that when town meeting comes, we need a zero base, or we need a balanced budget, and the budget has to match with the revenue.
Is anybody in the, well, first of all, does, I would suggest that we schedule a, post a meeting for Monday night.
Just, just some, what's the action limit now?
My action plan would be post a meeting for Monday. John, get the budget out by the end of this week. We post a meeting for Monday night, bring department heads back. Back if they wish to, to talk about the budget. And then, single issue at Monday night would be budget, and then come back on Tuesday to vote the warrant as is.
And when we send out to the departments, we'll show the 13 and the 14 and the increase amount, so we'll get kind of a-
13 and the 14?
That's what you're saying.
Oh, fiscal.
And the police wages and salaries is where we were talking. I'll recheck the number, but it's a little over $200,000, but I'll recheck the number.
All right. Putting all that stuff aside, anybody else on budgets?
Oh, one last thing. No, go ahead.
Vicki Morrow, Tom Armento, Row, Town Council. Maybe the department heads can use some other revenue sources for things like training or equipment, and maybe for grants, you know, from the state and that kind of thing. Not to say that they don't, but maybe dig a little harder for those types of items that we need to cut in this budget. You know, like you said, for instance, training, you know, equipment, that kind of thing. There's a lot of money out there. I think that if we dig a little harder, we can find it for those types of items. Who else?
Just a-
And there isn't any training for the issues that I talked about with police. That doesn't exist.
We signed, we signed a grant application last, two weeks ago for, I forget what that was, David.
That was 911. That's, that's related to dispatchers and emergency medical-
I just meant, because we just recently got a grant, applied for a grant, and, I mean, we are not sitting on our laurels.
No, no, I'm just saying, you know, that, that's just another place that, you know, keep your evening light. That's all.
Then I would suggest that-
One last question. Cynthia, we're going through a, a capital expense at Norris right now. Do you foresee any capital expenses occurring up at the regional high school in the next five years that we should sort of plan for?
Next five years, you're prob, I mean, you know, school's 10 years old. You know, we're starting to, things are starting to break down. I don't foresee any major renovation type things, but I can see us putting more in the budget for maintenance of the building. It's HVAC in all the buildings. It's what kills you, boilers and-
There's no leaky roof or anything, or?
No.
But on that note, I don't know whether you were here, but the local school has come back with another request for capital improvements up to the tune of-
Uh, yeah.
Three, four million dollars?
Yes.
For what?
For boilers, windows. It wasn't the original, we originally put in an MSBA for like renovations in the, in the elementary school. The MSBA has an accelerated repair program which covers roughs, windows, and boilers now, but that- now, but at that point, it just covered roofs. So what they did was, they took the roof out of our MSBA project and just funded the roof. So what we've done is just re-submit what we originally submitted like two, three years ago. Yes, I'm working on, that's right, I'm working on the third one now. From the way the state sounds, it doesn't sound like they're going to do a lot of...
Yeah, and just to stop you from saying, that's my point here, is that we're funding the roof at a million seven, of which the state wonderfully is giving us 55%, but we're on the hook for the other $600,000. Those other repairs come in and we get 55% of those, great, for a $4 million project, we get $2 million from the state, but guess who's got to pay the other $2 million?
We don't have that money.
No, we don't.
But, well, and when we put this in, caveat is, when you signed it, there's a statement there, they don't guarantee, they're giving us the money, and they don't expect that, say next year, they say, okay, we're going to fund this project, you can say no. You are under no obligation to do it.
Appreciate that, but, you know...
But I, you know, the other, the other point being, then you start putting stuff in the capital plan, which hasn't been funded.
Right. We're willing to commit, but we don't print money here.
Well, I know, we don't print it up at the, fortunately, at the regional...
All right. We're going to post a meeting for Monday night. We're going to touch base with town attorney for Ed and Jackie voting, or signing the warrant, and actually voting on the warrant at that point in time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Voting and signing the warrant, so that we don't run into a problem there. And we'll all see you all Monday night if you're still interested.
Yeah, I think so.
Thanks.
But I'm going to take a break, and before anybody goes anywhere...
Better not.
I, we have a member that's leaving us tonight, maybe, I'm not sure she's coming back again.
I know, I have a meeting on Monday night.
I mean, I only going to get to do this once in front of the cameras, and I swore I wouldn't do this.
And I swore, and you swore that you wouldn't do this to me?
Right. Just to show the trust that's been envisioned in this board over the years. While we have an audience here, the board selectmen would like to present Ann Roy with a certificate of recognition for her six years of service on the board, and thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I would just like to say that particularly the last two years, I can honestly say it's been fun and enjoyable. I think that the board just seems to have come together, and it's nice having a female to chat with. The first four years are tough, it's like a steep learning curve, but that's the last two years, just like Jess, Jess got off, he wanted to come back. You're having me come back on Monday, so I'm thrilled.
The voice of calm reason on that end of the table.
Really, so thank you so much, it's been just very, very...
We were going to do more, but I was sworn to do nothing.
You were sworn to do nothing, except a beer.
All right. Thank you all for staying for that little presentation. Anybody have any other things? Please, no? John?
John?
Jackie? Yeah, both of you. I had a meeting all day today, so I'll ask you one. All our, well, I mean, Vicky. Vicky.
That was no plus and must.
I had a meeting, I took, meeting with, all our costs that's associated with that February 8th night, 25%. Just the pile of costs will be reimbursed, beginning with 40, 50 times.
Well, I think it took four years until I got my voice.
If that's the case, the community can call it free cash, or we use, when we get it, the DR approves that certain cost.
You want to talk about that?
You can borrow more.
You have to do at the time.
You need to answer.
Oh, I, do we have that letter from...
No, it won't come yet, we have to have a big meeting with them, they're going to come to the office, review the records, and see if eligible, and stuff like that.
And I even did it myself a couple times.
We'll need that when it comes to, and we'll take work. Okay.
Get a few votes in that we wanted, yes, we did, learning from the...
All right. Did Charlie still leave?
Come do some...
Okay.
I really like it.
We have a request here to sign, re-sign a grant, application for the, they need an extra copy, for the rail trail. This is, we've signed this already, this is an extra copy that we need to sign.
This is for our records or for state?
She moved East Hampton.
All right.
Has been black?
Up here, Mike, up here, I'll wipe that out.
Haven't seen her in a while. So it's only one person?
Oh, it's only one person, I'm sorry.
Was it finance committee or something?
Capital improvement.
Sorry about that, that's all the lines. All right, we're on to approval of minutes, you've got 3-5, 3-12, 3-26, and 4-23.
I've read them all, so...
All right, when were you not here?
I was not here for the last two, I believe.
So you can only vote on the first one, then?
So I wasn't here for the 26th of March, and the 23rd of April.
Oh, you show here for the 12th?
Yeah, so I wasn't here on the 23rd and the 26th. March 5th, March 12th. Was I here for all? I think he's learning how to ride, he keeps going around in a circle.
Honda would be a lot harder.
Uh, lawnmower? Yeah, I guess it would be. You know those big Hondas, they have electrical reverse?
Right, right, yeah.
And they have the little outriggers, when you come to a stoplight, they come down so you don't tip over and fall over? Yes, they do. I've seen them, slow down, and their legs come out, keeps them from tipping over.
All right, anybody want to make a motion on those four minutes that are there?
I make a motion to approve the minutes that I was, I was present at, I was at, well, I'll tell you what, I withdraw that, somebody make a motion that covers all of them easier.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for, you've got a set of dates?
You were here for all of them? All right, is there a second from somebody that was here for all of them?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have seen for the 26th and the 23rd.
All right. We've signed the payroll warrants from the prior weeks, we have a bill warrant...
I have a, just a note, Mike, if I may.
Yeah.
Based on reading that note, the minutes from the previous meeting, we need to get some kind of report with Mr. Umel and the billing inspector, which we're a little, we haven't seen one.
Rich is actually scheduled to meet with you at the next meeting. He asked to meet with the select board, so at your next meeting, he has that report.
Okay.
You talking about the property on former?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so bill warrant, W-1344, for 286, 379?
So moved.
We are, we are...
All right.
Sorry, assigned.
Sorry. All right, so the warrant's in there, no appointments, no one-day licenses, the draft of the town meeting warrant, do you want to consider that tonight for other issues other than the, of the budget?
Well, we have to consider that, those, some of those items, we might have to strike, we don't have money.
Well, do you want to run through them then, tonight?
Sure.
All right.
Drafted here?
Yeah.
What page?
Not there?
There's copies on the table.
Oh, it's on the table, all right. All right. Well, the first article is the Richard Allen Educational, that doesn't need to be done. The first, second article is to see if we'll vote to endorse the Southampton Master Plan as summarized. Anybody have a problem with that one?
Nope.
To see if the town will fix salaries for all elected officials.
What's that? Oh, thank you.
Anybody have a problem with number three?
Nope.
Fix the salaries. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $20,401 from the, these darn weep hat loans.
Nope.
Uh, to see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from free cash into the town's restricted capital stabilization fund.
Nope.
To see if the town will vote to transfer $162,000 from free cash into the all-purpose operating stabilization account.
Why is it a weird number? Is that the total we had to return?
Yeah, it's 112 that we had to return plus the $50,000.
Plus the three cents?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was part of the 112, wasn't it?
No, I have no problem with that, Ann.
All right. To see if the town will transfer the sum of $10,000 from ambulance fees to the police department wages, this is the account that, the concession that we got Chief Hyde to make three, four years ago, because of first responders, that's, if you weren't...
Used for?
Paid to supplement the stipends that the police department has for first responders.
The ones that are EMTs.
The ones, that's, that was three or four years ago, I think we started that.
I remember that.
To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $96,000 from the ambulance fees account to fund ambulance-related expenses there too?
That number is highlighted because we still have not received the budget from the finance committee, so once that number comes back, the revenue, when the expenses are supposed to be equal, that number will be put in place.
Put this on, because I asked John if I didn't have any idea, I didn't have an...
This is an item that goes on every year, that dollar amount, whatever the expenses are to what your revenues are from the ambulance, are supposed to equal, and that dollar amount goes in here.
Yeah, this, this equals your expenses for the, for running the ambulance.
Okay.
So we take it from your ambulance fund, your revenue account, the ambulance income, and pay your expenses.
Okay.
And then, these are the enterprise funds, nine, uh...
Difficult.
Dollar amount needs to be corrected, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, Vicki had reviewed it, and she lowered the dollar amounts of the indirect costs. I thought I saw the numbers.
The indirect cost, we carried a higher number last year, thinking that Dave Kilson would do an evaluation of the actual indirect cost that each one of these enterprise funds did, and we overstated them. Okay?
These are down.
These are down. They're up a little from what I projected, but they're actual numbers, okay? They're hard numbers that were based on insurance policies, department costs, like the treasurer's office, the clerk's office, percentage of the town report, she goes through that to establish...
So that's, that's only going to affect those two indirect expenses, right?
Right.
And the other numbers are hard and fast. To see if the town will vote to transfer, authorize the treasurer collector compensating balance, to see if it's vote, transfer $92,000 from free cash to Hampshire Regional Operating Budget, which is simply the money we didn't give them in last year, the last town meeting.
We owe it for this year.
Yeah, well, last annual town meeting, May of, 12th, we cut their budget by 92, this is to replace, to pay them the 92.
Because of the four towns.
Right. And we were stuck hanging.
But can I ask a question at this point? Why are we taking 2014 money to pay a 2013 request, and why shouldn't we have taken it from free cash?
We should have done it earlier.
I know.
It's hard to hear down here, please.
The 92,000 was for 2013 expense. We're using 2014 money to pay for it. That's my question. Why aren't we using, if we can't put all the money back in stabilization, it's, we should be using, my personal view, we should be use 2013 free cash and pay that off, because it should have been in last year's budget, or the budget should have been adjusted to take care of that cost.
Which brings up an interesting question, does this require a nine-tenths vote?
I had everything reviewed by town council, so...
We'll go back and make sure that he knows that this is a 13...
Okay. I did, I put the note on there that this is an FY13.
Oh, all right.
I'd be comfortable, but you would double check, just on that thing, because it's important.
This would take a, if it's a 13, 14, if it's a 13 bill with a 14 revenue stream, it's a nine-tenths vote.
That's historically the way we handle it.
And there's no way to go back to...
But, but that was the annual town meeting in 12.
Not 13.
No, May of 12.
Right.
When it was due in FY13.
The revenue was coming from, why can't we, why can't we just use the free cash we have and pay this bill off?
We should.
And that would free up $92,000 for this budget.
Right.
Well, yeah, but it's, we, free cash is going to go down by $92,000, revenue's going to go down.
But the 90, the free cash is for last year.
Maybe the 92 was built into free cash originally, I did this before.
The question is, how do we, how do we accomplish paying it now, before town meeting?
Have a special town meeting before the annual town meeting.
Isn't that possible? They actually have, what's it called, they actually have a special town meeting inside an annual town meeting in some towns.
I don't know if we could hit through that.
Yeah. I love it. Who's the new chairman? We had to do this a couple years ago.
It's above our green level.
Might have, but it might have been.
But I think, you know, considering of this, this budget here we're going into, and we're taking $92,000 to pay last year's bill, we have free cash that has been certified, yeah, I want to put that money back into those RDA funds, but we have a commitment...
Can we just say $92,000? Can we just take this and say, we write this and say it's free cash, take the free cash in this budget?
First, and then...
Just change the wording on this warrant?
Well...
No.
Well, I think they would be happy with $92,000 more to deal with, and I think department heads would rather, a little more than nothing.
Question is, what's the mechanism to transfer free cash to pay a bill? Town meeting, right?
Two-thirds vote.
Yeah. So...
We owe, we owe for two or three.
So we need to, we, so we need to post another town meeting?
And, and you have a different posting requirement, so you'd really need to get it done before...
June 30th?
Posted.
Can that be done before, say, June 30th? It doesn't have to be done, we could probably do it the first part of June.
Yeah.
Oh, so, oh, not, not try and do it on the annual town?
Yeah, strike that off.
Yeah. Yeah, just pay down the free cash, we'll have to adjust three articles.
Would we be better off just finding out if this is a nine-tenths, and if it isn't, just do it this way, instead of scheduling another, because you're going to run into expenses of a special town meeting?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm sitting back and putting my department head up, we're paying a bill that's going to affect a department that I'm running, and add all the other departments by $92,000.
But isn't it going to...
That's a lot of money. It comes down to balancing the budget.
What are, we owe the money, and if we pay it next year, we're going to, if we pay it, like, today, if we pay it today, we've got $92,000 less free cash.
Let me ask you a question, well, if we run the same problem, we don't get the, we don't get what we allocate to the schools, and they beat us again, four or five, we've got to come up with another $92,000 next year.
We're going, you're going...
This is going to compound itself.
I'm assuming that, we have, we didn't hear that they didn't fudge it, budget the full estimated thing.
They didn't say they didn't commit to what they did on that.
Yeah, but, I, I don't know, I think, I just see it as, one, if we pay it today and we're down $92,000, but it's coming out of the same pocket, it isn't like we got a new pocket to take it from.
You can go along. But what I'm saying, we're, we're taking 2014 money and putting, to take care of a bill that we should have been on our radar right along, and took care of it then.
But doesn't that decrease our 2014 revenue?
Of course it will, it'll take, it'll affect the free cash.
Yeah.
And we got to reduce those, those two...
What change, assuming it makes the change, what, what effect does it have on the budget?
Nothing.
It's a net wash?
No, not. No, it frees up $92,000 for 2014 budget. No, no, it frees up ninety-two thousand dollars for two thousand and fourteen budget.
But it's spent.
With less free cash?
With less free cash.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, the...
And they want to guard the free cash? They, the finance committee wants to...
Because the net, the net effect on the budget?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll go with the pleasure of the board, but that's my, my, my feeling.
Can it just stay the way it is? For simplicity? Because we've got all those other things to deal with.
Well, it's, I think if you do need to...
Ninety-two thousand is not a simplicity number.
No, no, I mean, we're, we're so, the budgets got kind of messed up this year.
I know.
It's squished. Let's deal with the squishiness of the budget and just keep this the way it is.
Why don't we find out, let's run it by town council again to make sure, and as long as it doesn't take a nine-tenths, then I, I'm comfortable putting it into this town meeting. I understand your problem, but I, for the simplicity of just handling it, do it that way. If it's a nine-tenths, then we want to, they probably want to back it out and either do it at a special town meeting.
And just skip over it.
Skip over it.
Yeah.
But at any rate, what we're talking about is taking it from two thousand and thirteen to pay a bill that was from two thousand and thirteen, rather than taking out of the next budget.
Right.
Which really does make sense, and I understand what I'm saying. I mean, you have a, free cash is sitting there to be used for two thousand and...
We should have taken care of this sooner.
Right. And now, the budget's going to be deemed by ninety-two thousand dollars in this next, like, budget that's...
I don't want to confuse the finance committee anymore, but I think we should at least present them what we were talking about. If they're not with it, fine, I'll, I'll go along with it.
Alright. So, that's the plan, and we're going to check with town council. You want to talk to finance?
I'll just ask if they're interested.
We'll do it, Mike. We just sort of leave it there and skip over it?
Yeah, we always pass it over.
Because you don't have to read number all the articles as well. It just keeps the, the form.
We can always pass it if, if we decide that we don't want to present this.
The only thing, I don't want to blindside Regina here, but she will have to adjust two or three articles. Okay?
It sounds like Robert has a solution.
If you have something and you don't want it, the better way is simply not making a motion.
Right.
And then the moderator is hearing no motion with the next article.
Right. Okay, just slide by it. Okay. Uh, we're on article thirteen, revolving accounts.
No problem.
Question I have with this, on revolving accounts, when some of these accounts have money that surpasses the spending limits, that's supposed to revert back to the general funds.
Yes.
We need to find out if that's being done, because I don't think it's been being done.
What about the council on aging ban? Did we decide we're going to do something about that?
Well, we were supposed to hear from them this week or last week, and I haven't heard anything of you.
Anyone talk to Lil' about that?
I haven't heard from her.
I'll, I'll talk to Jennifer tomorrow, find out where we are, and then get back to you Monday.
That twenty thousand dollars is not a real number. I mean, just that. Because we always spent this year.
Well, that's the operate, that's their income. That's just an income number.
But what I'm saying is, like, the planning board, the building inspectors, if they're generating more money than their spending limits, it doesn't mean the extra goes into their budget for next year. It's supposed to go back to general funds. That's how I remember that going.
Ten thousand dollars from community preservation, undesignated accounts to the parks commission to be used to provide memorial area and crossroads, Crossroads Park for reflective purposes? Oh, reflective, like in cloth processes. Okay, sorry.
Is that the angel thing?
Mm-hmm.
I was thinking reflective as in...
So is that, it's okay. Lights and stuff.
Any problems?
My question is, can we think about if we need that money, take it from free cash versus operating budget?
No, that's community preservation.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I have no problem with it.
To see if the town will vote to sum of thirty-five hundred from community preservations to veteran graves officer to be used completion of monuments.
No problem.
No problem. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of five thousand from CPA to historical preservation.
No problem.
Um, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of ten thousand from CPA to be used administrative expenses, that's their operating budget.
Yep.
To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of five thousand from CPA, uh, to the historical commission to fund town share of matching grant commemorating the one hundred and fifty anniversary of the Civil War.
Okay.
No problem. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of seven thousand nine hundred and sixty from free cash to the fire department expense account for the purchase of new fire hoses for the fire trucks or to take other actions.
Didn't we just buy fire hose?
We did. We did buy some recently.
See, we talked about buying fire hoses.
Did we buy hoses?
I couldn't find any of them. There's some new stuff. What I'd like to do with that is we lost a lot from the pod station and all the rodents, and we get to the point where we have less and less hose on our trucks. So, I would put that in there so that I could equip one truck with hopefully enough hose on there, take all of the hose off that truck, and pass it on to the other two. So, we have a standard length of hose on every truck.
What about the rodents?
Yeah.
The truck's not down there anymore.
But I'm just, I'm trying to get back to that question. Um, then, did we, did you see any records at all that we gave you money? I thought last year or the year before, we gave ten thousand dollars worth of hoses.
Uh, the finance committee mentioned something that I've looked around. I didn't see anything. Uh, I can't say that we have ten thousand dollars worth of new hose over there. We might have a couple of pieces of new stuff, but that's about it. And most of this would be a large diameter supply hose that I...
Two and a half.
No, it's four inch.
Okay. Anybody else? Alright, to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws for conservation.
It's just over my server. Article twenty.
Oh, oh. I'm sorry. Not on purpose. Five thousand six hundred and fifty for a new server for, for the fire department.
The server I have over there is getting pretty old. I've already had some work done to it, and it's been told to be by the IT guy that it's getting old, and to replace it, it probably costs around fifty-six hundred dollars. Uh, if we wait until it goes and decides not to work, you're probably looking at maybe ten thousand, because a lot of the stuff in there, they won't be able to get out of it.
On this server, is it unique for police, um, activities?
No.
Can you use it?
Years ago, I, I think when this was all set up, the police and the fire had a server together. But there was something wrong with linking up the fire to the police.
And the software?
They were shooting across with an antenna, and then depending on whether the wind blew or not, so we couldn't do it. The fire went with their own server, but the server's getting old and it's a problem.
I mean, I'm going to, I mean, this is, there's another, I don't know the system, and I'm not a hundred percent, you know, IT literate, if you want to call it that way, but, um, there was something that came in the other day, um, from Hampshire County in regards to software servers and clouds and stuff like that. Um, they were offering a new program, um, and it was going to be cheaper because they were getting, they had an eighty thousand dollar grant that would support it, and this is something you could check into with Hampshire County Council of Government.
Sure.
And see if it would solve that, because they, they were pushing, they, you know, and they, they talked about promoting the service to cities and towns, and please call them.
Okay.
Does anybody have any problems with, um, article twenty-one, which is the conservation commission changes?
No. Did I present that right?
Yeah. Twenty-two is to see if the sum to financing following water pollution abatement facilities, projects, that's that wet pat thing. Uh, treasurer collector borrows the money. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of ten thousand from free cash now in the treasury, treasury to the other post retirement benefits study account.
That's a study that we haven't been doing, or we're required to do.
No, that's a, Jack, I think he was talking about that. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of fifty thousand from free cash to fund the public safety complex feasibility study? That may, that may be one that has to go with.
Well, we have reduced.
Or reduced, I was thinking too. Um, alright, so the only one that's really needs to be discussed is the, um, budget one. The next item on the budget, the agenda that we need to discuss about is the, how we're going to review and evaluate and select a new fire chief. Anybody?
So, one of the options is to continue with the committee we have for the town administrator and...
That was the reporter cornered me, and I said, yeah, that's a possibility.
Well, that was you speaking through the...
It was, she, well, she got me and got me.
So, do you not feel?
No, no, I'm just saying, that was, I, I think there's three options, that use the existing committee.
Right.
Form a new committee, or whatever else you'd like to do.
Oh, that's, no, I would say try to keep the, the current committee, see if they can keep them on. If not, just reconstitute with five other people.
Or do you, you know, and then, um, the question that someone has asked me is, do we want, should we include more citizens at large? Not, not, oh, that, maybe that was the lady at the other end of the counter.
It is a service, it's a service industry in the sense that we're all in the service industry here. Maybe having one or two people from the community would be important, but I think you also need to have people from other departments in town.
Well, I, I think the thing, we have fi, we have five members on the committee now, I, I, and I, question is, do you want to add some citizens at large?
First, I think you ought to check with the committee first, see if they do it. If the committee does agree with it, I'm, I think it's a good idea to add some citizens.
Alright, so the first question is to contact John, John's the chairman of that committee, right, John?
So, Mike, you're thinking like seven people to just sort of round it out or?
Well, yeah, that's fine. I mean, let me ask you, are you willing?
I'm willing to do it.
Yeah, I don't know that you...
Why?
Potential for conflict.
What conflict?
Hopefully, he's technically still employed by the...
I haven't, I mean, he's, uh, the position is there, but I'm going to be out of here before you get a fire chief.
Alright. And Jackie, you willing to contribute, sir? On that committee?
Well, you know what? I think that I'm on a lot of other committees right now, so you should find somebody new to be on that committee.
Maybe, yeah.
Ha, ha, ha. Yeah, Anne or Dave. What about Dave? Dave, you would be so good in that committee.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, Dave, I think that's a good idea.
I'm already on it. I'm on a few other things. I don't know if I'd be able to do that.
Yeah. Alright, oh, Chief Silvernail's on that committee, right? And then, John Mark?
John Mark.
So, how about we just back up for a second?
No, I think you have to, maybe have to wait until the election comes.
Alright, let's do this. Why don't we just say we'd like to have a subcommittee of seven people made up of some town people and some... And while we're on TV, would you like to solicit application?
Any applicants who would want to be on the screening committee for the new fire chief?
Contact.
Contact the town administrator's office with a letter of intent.
Okay. So, that's still up in the air, and that needs to go on the next agenda item again. Alright. We now have a meeting on Monday, whatever that day is, which is what?
About six-thirty. Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, but what day is it? Six, Monday the sixth at six-thirty.
Six to six-thirty.
What's the date of that? May?
Six.
At six-thirty.
At six-thirty. So, you're meeting May sixth and May seventh, and then Robert's having his thing on May ninth.
Yes.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Oh, yeah, to talk about the warrant.
Oh, got it. We can talk about the, the, the work in progress warrant.
Yeah, work in progress. Um, okay, we have a closing date on Brickyard Road, May tenth.
Um...
We have a closing date on May tenth on...
You guys to what? That property?
Yeah, the Backriver property.
I haven't seen anything on that, something... What?
On attorney.
Is there paperwork or just a phone call or?
Well, we were ready to go to the closing last time, so they just got to reconstitute the paperwork and do it again.
Nothing's changed?
Nothing's changed. We haven't changed the numbers. They're still the same numbers.
I was just getting to the next.
Keep one to hold with it.
I was out of property.
No, the dispatcher's vacation.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, so they said that, no, they're not, they're standing firm. They have not, it's where the difference of the dispatcher's receipt.
Your vacation time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we saw, there was an email on that during, are you all, is it in here?
No, I did not put it in your package.
Can you get us the email?
Sure.
We had a typo in the contract. We didn't catch it. They got something they weren't supposed to get. They won't give it back. Does that sound?
But didn't we sign that contract that does stipulation in it?
Wow, everything pertaining to the dispatcher?
Just that, the memo, the, the email.
From what?
Bam bam. Yeah, he won't give it back to...
I'd like to hear from the chief.
And what is it that we gave away?
We gave him extra vacation time because it was a typo in the contract. Yeah. It's our bad.
And it was his typo.
And how much did we?
We didn't type it.
But we didn't do it well enough.
Well, we didn't catch it, but we didn't.
How much extra is there in terms of?
I gotta get the...
It's going to be sizable.
Well, they must have been so pleased. Yeah, until we got it.
Something accidental, yes.
It wasn't accidentally.
I don't think so, here. It was his mistake.
It was his mistake?
He typed it.
But it was our bad because we didn't catch it.
Well, we made it clear that night, is everything fine? Did you review everything? And we were told, yes.
Chief saying it was not a mistake?
I'm saying it was overlooked.
And again, it's his, he made the typo.
But we didn't catch it.
We didn't catch it.
It's a contract, and it's, it is what it is.
In, in my world, when it's your mistake.
You own up.
Yeah.
Even if you review the contracts?
I'm just saying, it's, it really affects the credibility the next time we negotiate a contract with them.
Doesn't change my credibility of what I'm telling them, it's my deal with them. He was always trying to get something for nothing. I mean, that's his job, Michael.
There's negotiating, and then there's negotiating.
Right. This is a little fast, playing fast and loose.
We went, we, we negotiated all the, all the changes, and I don't think this was brought to our attention.
No, that was not one of the changes that we talked about.
So, what are you going to do on your Tuesday nights now?
I'm doing a dance, celebrate.
You're going to do crochet?
Play my fiddle and play the piano and...
Play your fiddle? You didn't bring your fiddle in here to play for us?
I was a band for a long time, fiddle band, country band.
Yeah, it was still, it was still on. Why don't we take a five-minute break?
We're trying to get back together. Move our pie, move our pie.
Do we really need anything?
Don't take a break or?
No, we split up unhappy.
How many do we have?
We have to keep on and...
Oh, good. Oh, this is Katie Klein.
Yeah, I think it was very sad.
When you guys are done, we need to pass it this way.
So, it's two years difference?
Yeah.
So, the dispatchers get four weeks of vacation in ten years, while the police get four weeks of vacation in twelve years.
Twelve.
Is it twelve or fifteen? Twelve?
Twelve. It's never discussed negotiation, and the dispatchers will file a complaint if the town doesn't change it.
So, I, I think we ought to send this to the town council with the next one.
Joe Fair gave us a comment before about this, remember before? And I don't remember what his actual thing was. He says, we can contest this, I thought.
Alright, so I think that's what we, my, my suggestion would be, we can test this.
So, do you want a motion as such?
I think so.
I'd make a motion to contest this.
Or at least call Joe Fair and, and get a current update on this.
But I think you should also have a motion to sort of say, we have these understandings.
I agree with you.
So, have a motion on the table as such.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
They're reading.
Oh. Hearing none. We got a motion and a second to contact Joe Fair over the legitimacy of the error that was discovered in the dispatcher's contract. All in favor? And finally, we have the...
The...
The, uh, that's just from Katie Klein.
A disclosure makes a part of the email.
Alright, uh, any, did I forget anything?
No, the most recent email that I sent out had to do with Chief Silvernail stating about the, the doors not being locked.
Oh, yes.
Four and twenty members not signing out the keys, so had drafted a key lock policy a couple of weeks ago, actually, prior to that email. I did not include it in your packet. May I put this in your next meeting on the seventh?
Yes. We have, we, whether you're aware of it.
Policy as thus, but it's like three years ago.
It's, we've had more doors left unlocked at, at closing time, again. Someone is not taking responsibility for locking the building.
Can't it be just a timer for the lock? It would be a good locker.
Be fairly expensive, I would think.
It would be very expensive if something was missing or something happened in the building.
Well, we have a security system and a lock door policy in this building, and I think it, the security system has worked.
So, problem is with the locking.
The, the door needs to be locked. I've done my share of being called in here and locking the doors.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know what the policy is that Reggie's talking about, but if the door's going to be locked at four o'clock, if somebody leaving the door at four o'clock, he can lock the door.
Right.
Somebody needs to take that responsibility. If they're not going to be used, there's going to be a backup to that person.
What I wrote in the policy was first person out at four o'clock locks the door. What's happening is people are leaving, leaving it unlocked, and folks who are still in the building have no idea that the door is unlocked. So, then they check it, or boarding committee members will be in the building when the doors opened, never signed out the key with dispatch, and then call the police department to go over and lock the door.
Who's, who's in the, I, and I hate to drop this on you, but you're here probably the most. Would it be just easier that at four o'clock, you lock the door?
Sometimes I leave earlier.
I understand that, but then you'd have to designate someone to, to follow up behind it. But you and Vince, we'll talk about, we, it's not on the agenda, so we need to talk about it next time.
Well, what about an automatic lock? At, at the college, at five, I, I stay until nine o'clock. People go a lot earlier than that. But at five o'clock, the police department automatically locks the front door. It's just locked, so nobody can get in. It's locked.
So, we have the police department come up across at four o'clock and lock the door?
I think that's a bad time, because that's a change of shift.
In the past, I had saw a quote from a company who had given us, like, a keypad situation where you program it, where it'll lock at a certain time, regardless. So, just like what you're saying, Anne. It's almost like a keypad or a key card, it'll lock the door. You program it, it'll lock the door.
How much does that cost?
It was like four thousand, two, somewhere in that ballpark.
Seems like for four thousand dollars with a budget that's a million dollars out of whack, somebody can turn the key in the door.
I, I mean, I, I, most people lock their offices.
That's fine. That's fine. You're chairman.
I just... What is the policy? It sounds like that board members are coming in here, the door's open, and they've done their business, and they don't lock the door?
Right.
I mean, we, we had this understanding that, um, they sign the key out at the police department. I've also heard that board members going over here and ask to get the key, and they're told they're not on the list, you're not getting the key. I dealt that with that frustration.
That happened twice. That is correct.
Okay.
But that has been resolved. That has been corrected.
Okay. I was hoping you corrected.
We're updating town directory.
Okay, okay. Versus, I, I just thought it was cumbersome on your part to, to do a review each day, and it was coming in.